Dude, I did brief the board on something the planner asked me to brief you on, which was some correspondence.
We're all kind of jumping around.
I just didn't want to forget that. I'm here to talk about that if you want to, at some point.
For fairness.
Whenever you want.
So, other businesses complete?
Yeah, I think we can go back to the public hearing on the zoning ordinance.
Sure.
Can you sit tight for a minute?
Absolutely.
Or an hour. I think you're going to stay for a while after.
I think you're right.
You're lucky. You can hear it all firsthand.
Yeah, as I said earlier, we have six proposed zoning ordinances. We'll take them one by one. Is that the board's pleasure?
Yep.
Public hearing for zoning ordinances and amendments. One, amend Article III use regulations by deleting Use Number 3.46 in its entirety. Article IV, dimensional requirements by deleting footnote 29 in its entirety and to substitute in their place martial arts weapons as Use Number 3.46. Use Number 3.46 would describe martial art weapons and set forth zoning restrictions for their use.
Under the title, it says for thy use and even their use. I think you read it like it should be.
Would you like me to read the proposed martial arts weapons wording? And where it would be permitted? Where they would be permitted?
The wording or the entire?
The wording. The new wording proposed.
Sure, that's not going to take long. The other ones might take a lot longer.
So, this would be added as Section 3.46, titled Martial Art Weapons, which would be the sale of martial arts weapons, including but not limited to throwing stars, throwing darts, nunchucks. I believe that's what it is.
Yep.
Blow guns or other objects designed for use in martial arts that are capable of being used as lethal or dangerous weapons are subject to the zone restrictions listed below. And in addition to, in addition, the selling of these weapons is prohibited within 2,000 feet of public, private, or parochial schools, public or private parks, recreation areas, sports facilities, and beaches. The sale of these weapons shall be restricted to an area at the back of the store enclosed by a wall, creating a separation from the rest of the store, and all weapons shall be kept and locked, case is not accessible to the general public. And the two zoning districts would be allowed in are the business and the business seasonal. Prohibited in all other zones. But, as it says, they'd still have to meet the separation distances, distance of 2,000 feet from.
This comes from the selectmen. And the previous version did not articulate by zone where these things would be allowed. Now it does. It also adds to the zoning ordinance, something that's in the town ordinance, which talks about the display aspect. The advantage of including this in the zoning ordinance is that the zoning ordinance can be enforced by an injunction. Whereas, in the regular town ordinance, it's only enforced by a fine. So, this enables.
More teeth.
More teeth, thank you. Yes, exactly.
Just as an administrative question, is this language, as it appears on the agenda, is that what's going to be on the ballot?
This is the one I just read.
That's going to be on the ballot?
Each of you have this wording now.
Actually, what happens, Tracy, on each of these is that the ballot will say, are you in favor of Amendment Number One from the planning board? Text is not going to be on the ballot.
No, I was just asking if this text was going to be, because this is like the instruction manual and not telling you it's a washing machine.
At the back of the book, there's a.
Very, very, very back.
Back of the book has the ballot word.
The ballot wording has been put together.
Yeah, little green sticky.
Don't get confused what's number one on our agenda is actually Article Two.
Right.
Are we okay with this?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on Amendment One?
Oh, I see, that's much better.
With regard to martial arts weapons. Seeing none?
You knew that was going to happen.
It isn't seen by the chair, Oswald.
Author Jay Moody, 3 Thompson Road. I would like to, for the record, protest the fact that the minimum requirements for these hearings weren't met for posting. You held a special meeting on 2 January, made all kinds of changes in five of these, and the minutes show that the town council said that tomorrow, Friday the 3rd of January, was the deadline. And I attempted to get the full text where the legal notice, which was published that day, one page, said I could go to the town office, planning, or the library. And at quarter after four, there was no, nothing ready at the town office. And the library was closed all day on Friday. I went by at 5:00 at the library, and there was nothing posted on the window or anything, except that they were closed. Actually, they were, during the storm on the 2nd, they had a telephone recording and a sign saying that they were going to close until Monday. But they did open on Saturday. So, the minimum requirements of having two posted places and the public publication, the notice was okay in the paper, Hampton Union, on Friday. But the notice that I could get the full text, and I couldn't get it on that Friday. I remember once, we had 20 articles for zoning, and they didn't meet the minimum requirements, set in RSA 675-3, and its reference to the requirements. And we had to redo the whole thing a year later. And those, many of those articles had merit. So, that's for the record.
You were apparently.
And as far as this article is concerned, it's, I heard it was a planning board article, but it's a selectman's article, actually. I can't see anybody believing that. In the posting, the 10-page posting that I finally got six days later, after the deadline, it's the town manager writing the, writing the planning board for a selectman's article on this article. As far as what it says, it's sort of fraudulent. The business seasonal district, which you can't have this thing occur within 2,000 feet, that's almost a half a mile, 40 percent of a mile, of a state beach or a town beach. There aren't any areas that would permit it.
Do you understand it?
It was noted the night that I read it.
Pardon?
When I read this in public.
Yeah.
It was noted, in public, on TV, that there would be no place on Ocean Boulevard, probably no place on Ashworth Ave, that would allow that because of the 2,000 feet.
It may have been written previously.
Had the beach state parks go from the river to the High Street, except for Boisette. And the town beaches in the business seasonal zone are Havel's Avenue, south about Concut, and north of High Street. And that's, this is business seasonal zone, north of High Street. So, I think it's fraudulent.
Well, one of the reasons that we want it on there is so that they don't sell the stuff in that area.
Anyone else from the public?
Just for an answer, Jenny, what were the two public places where you posted the notice?
This was posted Friday, two public places, the town hall and the post office. It was also posted on Saturday with the full amendment wording.
Okay. And in terms of the actual language, the notice said that it could be viewed in the planner's office.
Right.
Was the language in your office?
Yes.
On Friday?
On Friday. But like I said, it was in the library on Saturday.
Point taken.
Which is.
Can't help the storm.
Nope.
Still within the timeframe, so. The other thing, Tom and I wanted to make, the, as far as the article, it was sent to the planning board on December 4th. The board at its December 18th meeting decided that it would schedule the public hearing on it for tonight. So, it has been seen by the planning board. They've taken action on it previously.
I made that.
They decided to put it forward as a planning board article at the 18th meeting.
Oh, is that right? No. It wasn't, it wasn't at the, this is a brand-new hearing for zoning amendments. It wasn't at the 18th.
So, this is the first hearing on this, on this article.
It wasn't listed on the last two hearings you had on zoning amendments.
That's right.
No, but on December.
You had a 20th November one?
Like I said, December 18th, the board decided to hold.
Okay.
The only public hearing on it.
And it was read aloud for the public on TV.
Oh, you mean it wasn't on the agenda? On the 18th?
No.
Oh, well.
But if you were watching the meeting, if you were here, you would have heard it.
For the 20th of November hearings, and for the 18th of December hearings, the full text of both of those were posted at the, at the library. But, as yet, the full text for this hearing has not been posted at the library. But I tracked it down. It's in a, it's in a binder in the back of the library, which wasn't there Wednesday, after the deadline. But it was last Saturday, open to the public. I don't know, as I said, in all previous years and this year, it was posted, actually, on the full, the full text. It wasn't this year, and isn't yet. The second place is, is in your notice, your legal notice, that they're in two places.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none to the board?
I make the motion to move it to the ballot.
A discussion, motion by Tracy, second by Brendan. All in favor? Opposed?
Two, amend Article Two, districts in the following manner. Change a portion of the business seasonal zoning, BS zoning district, the business seasonal one zoning business, BS one. Revise the zoning map to incorporate the business seasonal one, BS one zoning district. Amend Article Three, use regulations to add a new use regulation, Section 3.44.1, for properties within the proposed business seasonal one zoning district that limits the use of the first 25 feet of depth on the ground floor of any building measured from the front of the structure to professional, commercial, retail use. Use permit, use is permitted in the business seasonal BS zoning district. Amend Article Four, dimensional requirements table to add proposed business seasonal one zoning district requirements, which include a building height allowance of 70 feet, with the exception of unoccupied architectural appurtenances which may extend to a point no greater than 80 feet in height. Structures would be prohibited from casting shadows on the sand on the easterly side of Ocean Boulevard prior to 6:00 PM from May 15th through September 1st.
For this one, it's a second public hearing, because the board at the December 18th meeting made some substantial alterations to it. So, we changed it. It was originally proposed as sub-district, and now it's being called the business seasonal one district. We also added different language to the use regulation, as far as the first 25 feet of depth. Changed that to professional, commercial, and retail uses. And we amended the footnotes on building height to take out some of the detailed wording about the appurtenances. And I think that was the changes.
Anyone from the board?
Well, I, if I go to the public first, I don't know, but I think it's fair that what you have, that letter from Attorney Els, I think is quite significant in terms of building height.
Height, yep. So, I did see this today as well, and I'm sure we'll hear from Attorney Els.
The business seasonal one zoning district.
Opposed. Well, I'll go to the public first, I guess, and then say what I have to say.
Steve Els, 13 Homestead Circle in Hampton. First of all, I'm very supportive of the board's efforts to fix a, you know, a building height down at this section of the beach. Likewise, I think your proposal to eliminate the Article VIII multifamily requirements for the beach is a real positive change, long overdue and a real positive change. Both of those proposals will result in far more certainty for landowners on what they're going to be able to do with their property, and greatly reduce the workload for the zoning board of adjustment. However, I think the building height article, as it's currently worded, will create a new issue for the zoning board and require even more variances for virtually all new projects along Ocean Boulevard. The last sentence in the proposed article, which prohibits buildings from casting shadows on the beach, will make virtually all of the buildings fronting on Ocean Boulevard in this new zone non-conforming. I have provided the board with a shadow study showing the B, C, and D blocks, which shows a structure only 10 feet in height, and what the shadow effect would be at 6:00 PM on September 1st. And it basically shadows the entire beach. And I would suggest that up at the ABC block, the Ocean Boulevard is at, is at its widest point there. As you go south, the road gets more narrow. So, if the beach is shadowed at 10 feet up at that end of the beach, I'm pretty sure it will be down by the casino. Your proposed article starts by authorizing an 80-foot-high structure, but it ends by effectively prohibiting anything over 10 feet. And again, that's not only for new structures, that's for what's there now. So, if someone wanted to do a modification of an existing building, it'd be an alteration of a non-conforming use, and that's yet another variance. So, I think that's clearly an unintended consequence of what you're trying to do. I would respectfully suggest that you seriously consider dropping from this height restriction article, the final sentence, which deals with the shadows on the beach. Certainly, in coming years, with more engineering, with more study on the issue, you may want to revisit it. But I think you're moving in the right direction by fixing certain things, establishing current standards, to eliminate, I trust, the need for the multiple variances that we've been seeking over the last several years. I think if you leave the shadow on the beach language in now, you're going to have these unintended consequences, and we're going to, we're going to fix some things, but we're going to create other issues. And I don't believe that's what you have in mind. So, that's really all I have to say. This was, this was a product produced by the in-house architect for Witcher Builders, who does a lot of work down here, and it was something that the architect just came upon on his own. He was aware of the new ordinance, and he started playing around and said, whoa, and let us know that maybe, maybe the board should be made aware of that. So, that's all we have. I think it's something that maybe requires a little more study on your part.
Or on theirs.
Everything else, we're all in favor of, absolutely. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Excuse me.
Good evening. Fred Rice, 15, Heather Lane. I'd just like to piggyback on what Attorney Els just mentioned about the shadows. Shadows has been a subject of concern. It's been a subject of discussion at this board and the ZVA for quite some time. I can't help but think, to some extent, it's a bit of a red herring. Because if you look at what happens at 6:00 at night at Hampton Beach, 90 percent of the people on the beach are gone. They've left by about 4:00, 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, because that's when they go to eat. And we, and they're not going to be out on the beach when they're there to go have dinner before they go out later in the evening. So, I think what this needs is a good dose of realistic observation. It needs a little dose of reality as to what really happens down there. If there were shadows earlier in the day when the place is absolutely mobbed, yes. But perhaps at this, at this time, whether there are shadows at 6:00 o'clock, I think that 6:00 is maybe an unreasonable time to prohibit shadows altogether. Shadows happen. They are a reality of the life that we live in. And the seashell, the pavilion casts a tremendous shadow. Well, you watch what happens in the late afternoon. People don't sit on the beach at 5:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon directly in front of the pavilion unless they want to be in the shade, because it's a very, very hot day or something like that. So, I think people know enough that they're going to do that. They know that even to this, this time, if they, they're not going to sit up right close against the sea wall if they want, want the sun. They will position themselves closer to the ocean, because that's where they're going to get that sun. So, rather than end up with the unintended consequences, as Attorney Els mentioned, I think that it would be better, I would also recommend that you consider dropping that language at this time and come and revisit it. And let the, let the zoning board know that this is your, your preferred criteria, and that, let them make individual judgments, because every building is not going to be the same. Some of them are going to be straight-sided in the front, some of them are going to be stepped back, and so on and so forth. But if you put a wet blanket on this right to begin with, you're going to stifle any incentive to improve the looks of the beach. You really are. It's just, there's no other way around it. I don't think that some places, I mean, you certainly don't want a place that looks like Miami Beach, but they know that the sun sets in the west and the shadows fall to the east. And their beaches, in many cases, are not as wide as Hampton Beach in some parts of Florida. So, you know that it's not a deterrent there. So, I would just underscore the recommendation of Attorney Els, and that the shadows not be a determining factor on this, and that you give consideration to doing that. Or at least, change it, at the very least, change it to something like, not more than 50 percent of the, of the sand should be shadowed by that point. Because that's pretty late in the day for people to be out on the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Is that, I can't, is that the A?
We have this one.
I can't see him. I'll give you the thumbs up, would you?
Sam Moody. Excuse me. I spoke against this in December 18th hearing, mentioning the purposes of zoning. First one being congestion in the streets, another one being population concentration. I just recently, week or so ago, read an article in Hampton Union, about the redoing Ocean Boulevard, 5 to 10 million, and widening the bridge. That's one of certain people's favorite, four lanes, Hampton River Bridge that goes from Hampton to Hampton, towards Seabrook. And in that article, it said, we need a wider bridge. One reason is the nuclear plant, in case they have an accident, evacuation. But the same people, same groups, which I consider commercial greed, are proposing to have 80-foot-high buildings, which should be in the condo, of course, residential condo use, for more concentration of people. Maybe it should be a six-lane bridge. I would like to read your zoning ordinance. 2.3, 2.1.3. The zoning map is intended for reference only. Final determination as to the zone lines being referenced to the written description of said boundaries, in effect, prior to the adoption of said map, together with any written descriptions or other amendments adopted subsequent thereto. 1981 amendment, 30 years. All amendments to the zoning district lines are by written descriptions. Every one has been done by, in recent years, by the planning board, written descriptions. We had a zoning map that was the official zoning of the town. Didn't last too many years. This big Mylar with a rolled-up, when lines on that map represented up to 25, 30 feet, you couldn't tell where the zone line was. We have 1,000 lots in this town, widths of 50 feet or less. So, we voted it out in 1981 and reverted to written descriptions. Originally, when the zoning began, they were by meets and bounds, street, direction of the compass, so many feet, so forth. But all the recent ones done by the planning board, POR, west of Ashworth Avenue, have all been done by lot tax map and lot number. And you can see them, the last couple in the zoning ordinance, they printed those three or four pages for west of Ashworth Avenue. Because you don't put a map on the ballot, the zoning map is intended for reference only. You change the zone, then you change the zoning map. It's not the official, official zoning map. And so, I would say that you've got to find, you've got to follow your own rules, you've got to follow the ordinance in amending this, and you don't, either on this nor in Route One articles. So, I consider absolutely illegal this rezoning, because you don't follow the ordinance. By the way, the ordinance also says that zoning districts are expected to follow the center line of streets. And streets are included, including private streets. But that map doesn't show like it. show like it, you're including the streets in the zones, or the edges of the district that you're rezoning. Now, the casino block, and they also own most of C to D Street, casino, two blocks, 440 feet, including E Street, that doesn't exist, about 400 feet deep to the Ashworth Avenue. I would say if you go to a 70 to 80-foot condo situation, I think the casino is gone. I think Day Tripper is going to have to find other places to amuse themselves. Not that there aren't others down there. But I repeat, you can't rezone, re-district the way you're doing it, and you have never done it this way before, because it's not allowed.
Thank you. Anyone else from the -- pardon, that's one opinion. On a number of topics. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Back to the board. Mark.
I'm just concerned that if we strike that sentence, it'll be a substantial change, and they'll have to have another public hearing, which would put this whole deal off until another year from March.
I'd rather leave it in and have them go for variance.
We talked about having the PRC doing shadow studies and looking at that. I'd rather, I don't want to lose this.
I don't disagree. Fran.
I absolutely agree with that. This, in great extent, is in response to the zoning board and the issue of proposals that were substantially higher than this. If we need to, we can come back in a year from now and look at that shadow issue and make a change then. I don't think we should lose the heart of the ordinance. You know, the zoning board is being faced with requests for variances on height. They may then get requests for variances on shadows.
Right. Of the sun.
And, you know, I don't know how many proposals they're going to have in the next year, but I would really like to see this ordinance get adopted.
Right.
And if we need to change it, we'll change it a year from now. Now, the only question then there, Mark, is if we did something with the dates, is that acceptable?
I'm sorry, with the dates?
Well, we're talking about May 15 to September 1st. Is there some other date that maybe makes sense? I don't know.
Or change the time.
Or the time, yeah.
Without requiring another public hearing.
I think those would be substantial, personally.
That's fine.
Okay, then that's fine.
It depends on what, you know, we wanted to get something, we want something for the public to vote on, and they may support this or they may not support this.
But we don't have time for another public hearing.
I would leave it alone for right now.
Each of us has a letter that I guess I'd like to read from John Nian, excuse me, who couldn't be with us tonight, and it's from the Hampton Beach Area Commission. It's a quick read, so I'll read it to you. Regarding Article 3, Amendment 2, it says, "The majority of the Hampton Beach Area Commission is in favor of this amendment. We feel that the planning board efforts on coming to some type of compromise on building development needs was shown in the amendment. Being completely transparent, the commission indicates that there was a commissioner who objected since the geographic area did not go far enough up on Ocean Boulevard, and some commissioners were concerned about the shadow statement. We felt the sentence about shadowing came without any real engineering study that showed height and shadow association, and that the definition on where, on the beach, it would be considered a shadow. For example, if the shadow was seen September 1st, just on the other side of the seawall and not the majority of the beach, would that jeopardize a height requirement? Therefore, although the commission is in favor of an overall intent of this amendment, we would ask that if it is within your power and not require another public hearing, you reconsider eliminating the shadowing sentence." I think that we debated this at length, and Keith made his points, and we all went back and forth about the dates and the extent of the shadow, and I think that we came up with what was fair and reasonable. And to have some of this coming out in the 11th hour here, frankly, this study that suggests that a 10-foot wall would create this kind of shadow is completely unfounded. I mean, how low is the sun on the horizon before 10-foot-high, the ceiling's 10 feet high, they cast a shadow that goes across Ocean Boulevard and over the seawall and out onto the beach? This is just kind of, I mean, somebody couldn't even put their name on it. We did learn who did this, but I don't consider this to be a valid point, and the timing of it is frankly, I don't know.
But I think the letter had a valid point. The letter had, we didn't do any engineering study, so we just kind of went and pulled it out of the air. I mean, it was what seemed reasonable.
My main question and concern is that if we change it, it will require another public hearing.
Is that true?
Yeah. There's a couple of things, you have your nice book here, just so you know this for future reference, just so we review it. This is on page 577 of the new gray book. It's RSA 675:3. Roman 3 says, "After the public hearing, the planning board shall by vote determine the final form of the ordinance, amendment or amendments to be presented to the town, which ordinance or amendments may include editorial revisions and textual modifications resulting from the proceedings." But then, in Roman 4, it says, "An additional public hearing shall be held if the proposal is substantively altered by the planning board after public hearing." And then substantive public hearings must be held at least 14 days after the prior public hearing. So, the question is, how do you interpret substantively altered? It would seem like if you're going to eliminate a whole sentence, it would be a substantive alteration.
For a whole concept, understood.
Yeah.
So, we can't do it.
We don't have time.
We either have to shelf it, or we put it forward as it stands.
Correct. For that particular item.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, if we move this Article 3 to the ballot.
I haven't had a chance to comment.
You will.
Well, you will. You always make motions before anybody's ready to do anything. So, I'm making a motion. Move it to the ballot.
Motion by Fran and seconded by Brendan. Any more discussion on the matter at hand?
Yes, I have two areas of concern. I agree with Mr. Moody's comments on the 2.1.1 and 2.1.3 on the description of the property. May I ask counsel a question related to that?
Sure.
I'm surprised you hadn't before now.
Well, I'm learning here, too, you know.
I'm just questioning that.
I've been dropped into the cookpot here since March, and I'm learning, and it's quite a learning curve, I admit. But I would like to see or get Attorney Gerald's advice on how binding that section of the ordinance is. I mean, this is what I was given, this is what I was given as a new member of this planning board, and the areas that Mr. Moody referenced are in here, and I'd like to know how.
I've posted on it already, so you're ready.
Well, I had posted on it over the weekend.
Yeah, I had actually conferred with Attorney Loughlin when there was an earlier attempt to articulate the zone with a description that wasn't. Just by comparison, if you look on page 11 of the zoning ordinance, there's an attempt to provide a blow-by-blow deed-type description for when there was a change, I believe, to along Ashworth Ave to include, rezone something. And the description you see runs for two pages solid. Attorney Loughlin's, when I consulted with Attorney Loughlin on this, his thing was you are better off if you have a map that shows you the lot lines and reference that by incorporation, and that's what's attempted here, rather than that, he felt, would constitute a written description, as opposed to spelling it out like a deed.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And that's what we were told at the December 18 meeting.
And I have one other thought regarding the height. We're talking 70-foot height, with the exception of unoccupied architectural appurtenances, which may extend to a point no greater than 80 feet in height. Carl McMoran of Aquarian Water Company, who was in here earlier this evening, had come in to us with counsel and discussed the water pressure problems for the high buildings at the beach. And he, I think Attorney Gerald mentioned the pressure tanks, which are atop a lot of the buildings in the New York area, New York City, and I'm wondering what the dimensions of those potential pressure tanks might be, and if it's only 10 feet, I'd be rather skeptical. So, are we going to be in a position where you may have a proposal of 100-foot building, or an 80-foot building, or a 70-foot building with a 25-foot pressure tank on top of it? That's not going to come within the 10-foot margin, but then is adequate water pressure going to be supplied? I understand there are other pressure tanks that can probably be installed within the building, so I'm not a.
Little pumps, little pumps, no bigger than that chat.
Little pumps?
Yeah.
Fire pumps. Put up just like they do the water slide.
I don't know how the water slide works.
I thought we already had.
Well, I'm concerned about the height, the extra 10 feet, is that going to be adequate?
They're not going to be able to get a.
They don't need a water tower.
Right.
They're not going to be able to project a build into the infrastructure of the building.
But I would expect there'd be no towers higher than the 80 feet.
Right, it's not allowed.
I don't think I'd be wanting to put a big water tank up there in there with the way.
One like a swimming front.
Motion by Fran and seconded by Brendan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Three, amend Article 8, multifamily dwellings by adding wording that exempts proposed developments within the business seasonal zoning district and the proposed business seasonal 1 zoning district from conforming with standards contained in Section 8.2.1, recreational area per dwelling unit, 8.2.2, frontage, 8.2.3, 40-foot building setbacks, 8.2.4, 25-foot driveway and parking area setbacks, and 8.2.6, open space buffer.
And this is another one that's getting a second hearing, because we substantially altered it at the first hearing. Again, we changed, it was originally proposed to include the sub-district, and we now change that to business seasonal 1. The board also decided to add Section 8.2.6 as one of the exemptions.
Right.
So, the only one that would apply would be 8.2.5, which is the driveways and parking areas from board construction specifications for new town subdivision streets. Night lighting shall be designed so as not to cast a glare on neighborhood property.
Why is 8.2.6 still here in print?
It's on the ballot.
Oh, it's on the ballot language.
It'll be Article 4 on the ballot language. It's right at the bottom of the first page.
Very good.
Until we get in trouble with that, we'll go back to a 65-page ballot.
Do we need, did we have any discussion within the board? Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Yeah, here he comes, Arthur. Why don't you just call Arthur?
It's probably the same standing.
Yeah.
I hope not.
I want to thank Mr. Emmerich for not interrupting me this time so far.
It's not over yet, Arthur.
And Mr. Rice for not saying that I shouldn't concern with the details. I should be just concerned with the big picture, and that's why I'm sure in Connecticut they have all kinds of bills every year to correct or null what they've already enacted into law, when they didn't check the details. I think it's kind of sad that I can neither question Attorney Peter Loughlin nor Attorney Mark Gerald on the statement that the rule of law doesn't mean anything. It's what I think is better. Peter Loughlin made one hell of a, one heck of a goof when I was a selectman on land use, and he writes the book on land use. We actually had a Boca Building Codes Board of Adjustment, illegal, with non-residents on it, because he wrote, "You don't have to be a resident of Hampton to be on that Boca Building Code." And then, six months later, he was redoing his New Hampshire practice volume on land use, and he wrote it, oh, he found where you have to be a resident of the town to be on the building code board of appeals. So, I discount Peter Loughlin's indirect testimony at this meeting. He was also last charter commission's attorney, and you ought to read his report. Thank God that didn't pass, because.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is inappropriate. We're not here to put anybody on trial.
Well, the previous ordinance, Arthur, and we're on to the next one.
I'd like to say that it took a long time to get all the districts in the town to conform to the multifamily. And if you want to be Revere Beach, fine, have a wall there. But you're not doing it just for this blockage, the yellow. We do have to call a television, don't we? But you're doing it for all the business seasonal, taking out multifamily safeguards.
No, it's only business seasonal 1. No.
From Winnetka Road south to the river. It also includes High Street north on Ocean Boulevard, the west side of High Street. You're taking it out there, too. This is regressive zoning, unzoning, and I object.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, make a motion and move to ballot. Motion by Tracy, seconded by Brendan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
amend Article 2, districts, Section 2.1 zoning map to change portions of the business B industrial I professional office residential POR and residence A RA zoning districts to town center zoning districts TCH, TCN, and TCS. The town center districts would be created as Section 2.8 under Article 2, as separate districts with zoning district regulations for permitted uses, conditional uses, and dimensional requirements, parking, building, and sign standards.
Mark, do you mind? Mark had his hand up first, but I'll give.
Based on the information we got, if we try to deal with this parking issue, and where it's not our control, and the information we have, that this will be a substantial change, I would like to just not bring it forward. Fair enough. I don't want to beat a dead horse.
That's okay.
No, I have to agree. I think it got bigger than we thought it was going to be at the last minute over a lot of different issues.
And, you know, the other two articles apply also.
Is that following, too?
Yeah.
I see you. I'm just making, and I won't pass you by.
Sure.
So, you have Tracy's in agreement. Mary Louisa.
Yes, so what I was going to mention to you gentlemen is that the board of selectmen as a board is requesting that, due to many deficiencies, that this article be pulled from the warrant.
In that case, I want it to go forward.
Do we have a letter?
No.
Off the board?
Do we have a letter from the Board of Selectmen requesting that or suggesting that?
No, they're not requesting it, we're just, we're just saying that it would be in the best interest of the town if this article were pulled from the warrant.
Is we, right, is we broader than...
Try that again.
Is we a group, or is we...
The Board of Selectmen has...
They sent you with that message tonight.
Sent me with the message.
Was that not in a public vote?
It wasn't, it wasn't a vote, we just have said confirmed as a board that we are meeting.
Was it a public conference or a private conference?
That we are uncomfortable with that.
Was it, um... Would it be a bird or a wire to know that, or?
I mean, I watched the meeting.
I didn't see any.
No, I, we just, we had a meeting on the...
We, where?
We, as a board, had, had a meeting and, which was posted on the late, late presented warrant articles. We had six warrant articles, articles come in Tuesday just prior to the deadline.
And when did, when was this meeting?
When did we meet?
It was posted, we met on the, whatever the date was, on Tuesday, the deadline for the submission of special warrant articles.
Were they televised?
On the fourteenth.
And that's reflected in your minutes?
It was a public meeting.
That you, the Board of Selectmen does not want to?
There was no motion, we just said that we are uncomfortable with the deficiencies in the...
Was that meeting televised?
No.
And you ordered our work session televised, as I recall, the one we had on January second? You ordered the cable people to show up here?
I didn't order it, I asked the cable people if they...
I denied it.
That's all right, I just asked the cable people if someone had time to come in and televise.
I don't, I think that there's a, some, some unclear bounds here. Everybody needs their bounds, and I don't think that, frankly, you're staying within them to come here and say that the selectmen have said, "We don't want to move this forward." I haven't seen or heard anything about that.
We're saying we're uncomfortable.
And then you're telling us how we're going to go about our business. It just all is, it's flying in the face of what we are here to do, what it does.
We're saying we're uncomfortable with having this article go forward.
Mark, were you present at that meeting?
Yes.
Is that the sense of the, is that the, the major, the...
There were reservations expressed. It was not specific enough, I would say, to put in any letter to this board.
And it was a request that they bring that to us?
Well, that's, Mary Louise is expressing what I think was a...
Consensus.
A consensus, if you will, but was there a request that this board be informed that? I didn't hear that.
I think we need to have a planning board member on the...
Selectmen's.
Selectmen's board. And go in and tell them everything they're doing wrong and sit back and say, huh.
You do, Keith, and that's me.
Kind of.
No, I am the selectman representative to the planning board, and I participate as an equal partner in the planning board, just as the budget committee member by statute, as part of the budget committee.
I get that, but I oftentimes watch the selectmen's meeting, and you bring things forward to them, talking about the planning board, which I don't think we've ever agreed upon.
What things?
Well, first of all, where the RP, I don't want to go down there.
Yeah, no, no.
Let's stick with Article five.
All right, I think we all just wanted to get a little off our chest about how the communication's working.
Right, or not. Mark has made his point.
Can I add, we, we did, there was a Board of Selectmen representative on the advisory committee, Michael Pierce was on the advisory...
And he agreed with the rest of the board on Tuesday.
I'm surprised to hear that.
He agreed with the consensus of the board on Tuesday.
I guess it wasn't shared with the public, gave it...
I guess he didn't share, share that with us at the, at our committee meetings.
Well, that's irrelevant.
Yep, so here we are at this crossroads.
At this point, having been on the committee, I do have to agree with Keith and with Mr. Emmerich that this particular ballot question needs to be reworked, and I'm not opposed to having to work on it further throughout the next six months so that perhaps we can redo it for the following year with tweak it, get the, get the problems out that people are concerned with, and we can re-present it to the public to vote on in the year 2015.
All that said, do we still...
Well, I, I, I don't know about the grant agreement that may require us to present something for the 2014 ballot as part of that contract.
Apparently the selectmen will find money for it because we would be...
In violation of the grant.
Is that...
That, that's, I, I don't know, you, if you're asking me the legal question, I haven't seen the grant agreement to know whether that language means you have to...
Did it with a contract?
But you got to take it to the ballot.
Well, that's a concern.
Sorry, that didn't convince me. I said I don't think it's ready for primetime.
Yeah, I would agree with Tracy.
Regardless of the grant, I mean...
Yeah, the grant shouldn't drive the, the bus here.
If we're not going to move this forward, do we need to go to the public?
Do we want to hear their concerns?
Yeah, we should.
I think we should.
I think we should.
So you've heard our positions, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Please.
Candy Stomack, 488 High Street. I'm on real thin ice here because I don't understand a lot of what you're saying, but in applying for, or looking to apply for grants for certain things we're doing, it's required that there be a historical district in town, so we were kind of hoping that you were at least going to start one because it does say you can't apply for a grant for certain things without a district. I don't know if that coordinates with what Jamie was saying, but I just wanted to let you know. That's why people are looking for some sort of starter.
Makes sense.
Don't ask me any questions, that's all I know. Thank you.
This doesn't create a historic district.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't.
It changes the zone, but it doesn't create a historic. It's referenced as historic, but it's not.
The main interpreted...
One of them is called historic.
Historic, but it isn't an actual historic district where you have a historic district commission set up.
So are those grants, do you, I'm just, I'm sorry, you're back in your seat, but I have to ask a question. If you were looking for a grant from, say, LCHP or somewhere in Concord, without that historic designation, you're not able to get, not able to apply for grants even? So that was the goal of all of this, was to allow you to get money to make improvements that don't cost the taxpayers anything, and now we're going to...
It wasn't LCHP, it was more in historic resources.
Yep.
We're doing research and we need equipment to do research and all kinds of things for historic purposes.
Sure.
But it's, it's not LCHP.
But you're not going to be able to apply for those grants without moving this down the field?
And how much money were those grants?
Well, there's a ton of them, we haven't even started looking.
I was just curious if there was a certain number that you were looking for this year?
No, no, not for this year.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'd make a motion to just not be moved to the ballot.
I'll second that, Tracy.
I, I can't say that I don't disagree, but I have to just say that it's been very frustrating to think that we went through all the effort that we went through, a committee of the stakeholders, I've said this again and again, the people that are going to benefit from this the most worked really hard to do this, we put together all these committees with selectmen and planning board members and on and on. If we could get half as much support as we get adversity, maybe we could actually have someplace that we'd enjoy and be proud of that, that, you know, could move forward. But this is just a constant, every single one of these things that came before us tonight was shot down, right? It is a little of that, right? It's, it's just on and on and on. Why do we come here and waste our time spinning our wheels only to find out in the eleventh hour that some little technicalities, some little language, a little something that prevents anything from happening? It's just a dog chasing its tail, round and round and round.
Welcome to democracy.
Yeah, well, it is a democracy, right?
It's very inefficient.
It's very inefficient, and so, all of that in a bag of chips, you know what I mean?
The work's not gone, there's a lot of work here, but it...
What's, it's, what's the harm of putting it forward? You get a vote, and someone, a friend of the court goes and protests it, at least we have a consensus from our community that strongly supports it or doesn't. Whether it's binding or not, I, I guess we're wasting two thousand pieces of paper, I don't know.
Right. Well, if we put it on the ballot and they vote it, it's binding.
Yes.
Not if there's contradictory information that has, that doesn't...
Certainly, I think it would allow you to see whether or not it's worth pursuing any further if it gets voted, you know, the thousand, the three thousand people that come out and actually vote, if a thousand people are for, two thousand against it.
As you said, I'm, I'm making security, I want to step up and say, hey, this is wrong.
Let me stick my nose in here one more time. Your position in the community as the planning board, and likewise with the zoning board, carries a great deal of weight when it comes to the voting booth. The public, by and large, in many cases, does not understand the totality of what's being proposed to them, and you can sit there and say that all the voters should be running around burning the midnight oil on everything, but they don't. And they have had a history of trusting the planning and zoning articles that are put on the warrant. I think it is a breach of faith with the public and the voters to put an article on the warrant that's flawed, that we would have to live with for a whole year until the next town meeting, just to put something on to kind of sniff out the wind and put your finger in the air. I think you have a tremendous responsibility, well, you're going to cry, I think you have a tremendous responsibility to the public.
But you're filtering the information now, with your authority and your responsibility, you're saying that you're not going to allow them the opportunity as a democracy...
To vote on a messed-up article.
In your opinion, that's not messed up, though.
Well, you've had town council and you've had the town mayor, and you've had myself...
You've had town council, bring it around.
He's town council, right?
Yeah.
And you've had all deficiencies pointed out, and there are still deficiencies.
Talking about parking, we're not talking about...
Yes, and, and obeying parking regulations to the best of your ability and doing something on a human scale, and they're, they have been a tremendous number of deficiencies. But it's last minute, Brendan, and it is not adequate to go forward.
I think we've all agreed as a board that we're willing to...
So you're putting your reputation on the line.
Push this, push this back for another year. I just had to speak my piece because I come here two nights a month, and everything that happens in between that time to try to make these things happen because that's what we're here to do, and it just seems to always come crashing down around you because just a few choice people decide they don't want it, and it's very tiresome, and that's my piece for tonight.
And maybe, but it's a very unfair perception of what's happening.
It's exactly what I perceive it to be. So we're going to postpone this, or at least we're going to vote on it.
Vote on it, yeah.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I did.
Tracy did.
I made a motion for not to go to the ballot.
I seconded it.
And seconded by Mark.
Okay, seconded by Mark.
All in favor? Opposed? There you go. Three, four, and three against, any abstentions?
Well, I, I think I'm going to have to recuse myself.
On this one?
On this one.
On the next one?
Number five, you're talking... No, I'm talking about this one.
That's fine.
Because I have a piece of property listed in this zone, so I have pecuniary interest in it.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll recuse myself, so the vote's three to three.
Five, amend Article one general, Section one point six definitions to add a definition of impervious surface.
No, I'm talking about the one we just voted.
The one we just voted.
The one we just voted, three to three, what?
Is it four, two, one?
No, no, it was four, three, but I'm going to have to recuse myself.
So he's not going to vote.
So it's now...
So it's three to three.
Three to three.
So, so...
So the motion fails.
So you have participated all these months at this table and all the discussions and so forth, and you are now bringing that consideration forward?
Yes.
All right.
I mean, I've got it signed down there with my name on it.
I know, but you had that signed with your name on it months ago.
It didn't matter.
Well, it all matters.
No, no, not for work sessions.
Every step of the way, Tracy, it matters.
He's, I'm not going to go there.
So the motion failed.
It fails either way, yeah.
Let me, let me just now get into something else, if you don't mind, please.
Sure, any diversion.
I've given you a memo that describes the problems with H two. The wording is, I don't quite understand what a village-like use is, and it's not defined anywhere. But one of the things is clear, that when you, when you say exemptions from the off-street requirements may be waived, I'm fairly sure what was meant was granted instead of waived. An exemption is granted and an exemption isn't waived. Do you agree with that?
In the following paragraph?
Because that's what we've done, like Ron Boucher and...
Right, so what I'm saying to you is I think if you wanted to change the word waived to granted, that's, I, I don't think that's a substantive change, I think that's an editorial change.
The motion was to not push it forward.
It contradicts itself.
Yeah.
Right, that's how I read it as well.
So you change the word from waived to granted, I think that's an editorial change you can make without having to go to another public hearing, not a particular one. Now, the other part, however, is I'm not really sure what was intended by documenting that public parking spaces are located within a certain number of feet. Is, is the intent of this to say that what would otherwise be required for parking can now be satisfied in public parking spaces?
What public parking spaces?
Well, if you're within the town...
Town law.
Own parking lot.
Spaces on the street.
The town-owned parking lot is available from nine AM to ten PM. Only in the leased lots on the east side of the town parking lot is there overnight parking because those are leased lots. The parking area is open during the day for businesses and shoppers there, and during storms, the parking lot is emptied for plowing.
We talked about that at our work session.
Everybody out.
And we're not looking for any...
This is for business use during the day, that's what the intent is to, it's not for overnight parking.
It's not a wise thing to rely on the town lot, which is...
So everybody gets towed after ten, articulated?
Does it have a big piece of black pavement?
No, not the ones with the leases and so forth, and the rest of it's cleared because it's the business.
So if I go down there and park and walk to a restaurant and leave there at eleven, I could be ticketed because I stayed past ten?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying...
Is that what the hours are? I've never heard the hours being...
It's not intended for long...
Ten o'clock.
What the conditional use permit process that this refers to, if you go back to subsection D, you're talking about the historic...
Actually, right now, I just wanted to clear up the parking hours.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Okay.
So what's the, are there hours...
What is the public parking lot?
Apparently there are specific hours.
I know that was just an over-overnight parking.
No overnight parking.
It'd be like shooting fish in a barrel to go down there.
Spots on the east side.
People that are going to the restaurants there that are still dining at ten, ten-thirty...
But there's no guarantee, they, they just can...
They're allowed to be open till one o'clock.
No, there's no guarantee that anybody can get a parking space.
Is it posted anywhere?
Catch us, catch can't.
Yeah, we, that's understood.
But you can't rely on that.
Well, you're making a statement ten o'clock to the public, I wish, we should, we should make sure it's correct.
I believe it's nine AM to ten PM.
Now businesses have to get variances if they don't have parking, that's how it is now.
What about, are there actual hours or are you just guessing?
To the best of my recollection, it's nine AM to ten PM.
So you can't park there at seven o'clock in the morning, go get your haircut?
Is there a barber shop open at some point?
Yes, there is, yes, there is.
I don't know. I don't go to a barber shop.
And the restaurants are open until one.
What I, what I wanted to get back, this, this thing talks about...
That's why I have less hair.
The subsection D that this goes back to, the mechanism of the conditional use permit, which is new to us, talks about conditional uses in the town center historic district, and it specifically talks about multifamily dwellings. That would be a big concern because you're supposed to have two spaces per unit.
We, we talked about that at that...
At the work session.
That is addressed in one, Mark, that's where, it says, "New construction resulting in an increase in residential units must comply with the parking standards as per in accordance with Article six parking, which requires them to be on, onsite."
Onsite, right. So this, this number two, though, gives an out to that, it seems to, it seems to, in that, let me finish, in that you no longer, it may be that you no longer have to have two spaces on site, that you can satisfy that with public parking spaces within a certain distance. That's the way I'm thinking this reads.
This was meant for the business, the daily business use.
We talked about that.
But this is what it says.
Not residential overnight. Not residential overnight.
But this is what it says. And there's no guarantee that they will have any access to public parking spaces. It's just catch as, catch can.
For business use.
For business use.
Not for sleeping overnight.
Right.
It's generic. It says, "In order to facilitate village-like uses," whatever that is, "on smaller lots in the town center district, exemptions from the off-street requirements may be waived." It doesn't say for whom. It may be waived through the granting of a conditional use permit.
But that would be true anyway, even under current rules.
But it may be waived for whom? Who's it going to be waived for? There's no stipulation. It doesn't say businesses. It doesn't say.
Number one stipulates.
It doesn't say residences.
Number one clearly stipulates new construction.
Yeah.
Resulting in additional square footage.
For residential units.
That's correct.
Well, that doesn't say anything about businesses.
Who's open up 24 hours a day? We have an ordinance that you have to be closed by 1:00.
Well, no, there's some businesses that are allowed to be open 24 in certain zones.
Heather?
Yep.
The point of all of this was to avoid having these little tiny lots, and we talked about the walk-in closet location, the burnt-down gas station as an example. Potentially, somebody could build housing there that might have, let's say, even six units. It's not practical to think you're going to park 12 cars there. So does that lot, just in perpetuity, stay a bacon weed bed because they can't park 12 cars on top of it?
Until it finds an appropriate use.
We're working toward having an appropriate use. Yes, of course we are, because that's what a dense downtown is. That's exactly what an urban or village is. It doesn't have parking for every, two units per, two car parking spaces per unit.
Well, you're saying in 6.3.9, all parking must be on site.
This is a sub-district or whatever we decided we're going to call it.
And I don't think that the Residence A owners in this.
You don't think.
These proposed districts, don't be snide.
I'm not being snide.
In this district, for example, Ann Russell on Drake Side Road and the people in Dearborn Avenue, I don't think they understand the impact on their property, turning them into non-conforming uses. I think it's pretty impertinent to go digging into the Residence A areas here. I don't know if Mrs. Russell is aware. I don't know if the, I don't think the public is aware of the impact of this.
I don't see her here. She's going to the meeting, she's on the committee.
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
Right? She must be proving to some of this.
But it seems to be that Residence A property owners are going to be upset. I just think it's imperfect and I think it's.
And we've heard you.
Breaking faith with the public to put something like this before them when it's not polished off.
Well, we can always amend it.
No, 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 you don't put something with, if you have something that you know going into it that is going to need to be adjusted, amended, fixed, and wiggle that, I think that's a bad approach.
We just did, I could say we just did it with the sun, but I'm not going to go there because we didn't get that one through. Mark, I'm all on board with waived and granted. If you find that to be the appropriate change to that wording, and it doesn't create the need for a new public hearing, then I'd be all for it.
I think you can do that much.
Thank you. We appreciate you looking at that and forward smithing it to the way it's supposed to be.
I think that's what, certainly is what's intended.
Right.
If you look on page two of Attorney Gerald's comments and email to you.
Confidential one?
It's, it doesn't say confidential on the top of my log.
Mine does.
Mine does.
Oh, on that part. Well, we're not confidential.
Only that part's confidential.
We're in public.
It was confidential when you were alone, but now that you're in public, it's open.
Can I read the final sentence without getting carted off the court?
Sure.
It says, "It might be better to pull the entire article and wait until next year rather than have it go forward with the flawed section H2 contained."
Which some people here have agreed to.
Since when do we read confidential stuff?
Anyway.
You're asking us to be held at a higher standard, and yet you just read something that was confidential.
Well, I asked counsel, those were his words.
But you asked it because you wanted to read that out loud in public.
Let's move to the content. I mean, yeah. Right now, Article 5 is hanging in the.
A lot of deflected energy out here.
Do we vote on this to be put on the ballot or do we not?
Well, somebody's got to make a motion.
Right, any motion.
First, you probably want to make a motion to change, make the editorial changes.
I'll move to make the editorial changes.
I'll second that.
Moved by Brendan, seconded by Keith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm recused because I don't know what my, it's an editorial change, but.
Your next motion, if you didn't pass the first motion, could be, could be to move it forward.
To the ballot.
And that solves our parking thing by correcting that language.
No. No. I still think there are problems with it. That's. I think that's.
Are we done with the public or can we hear from the public again?
Yeah, they may have a different opinion now.
Somebody, somebody wants to.
You should move back to, I think you should move back to the public.
I know, I just offered you to come up. Yep.
Tom Forton, 564 Lafayette Road and 556 Lafayette Road. You led us to believe that you were going to not enter this article, so should we comment on this time that?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fill a little in limbo.
All right.
We need to hear what the problems are so we can maybe, to change it.
Okay. In the downtown section, the center section.
Let's put that, let's put that at the bottom. So we all know exactly what we're talking about. Thank you.
If you look in the right-hand side of the red section, which is the town center section, the description reads as just north of Winnicott Road to Rice Terrace. And my two properties are, the 556 property is halfway north of Rice Terrace, and then, that's the 556 property, the 564 property.
Completely north.
Is completely north of Rice Terrace, but yet is encompassed in that town center historic zone. Whereas the gas station, which is south of, you know, is adjacent to Rice Terrace and is located south of me, is not included. And my concern is that you're restricting the use of my two properties contrary to the description that was given.
And that's a good point. As I look at those, Tom, I can see exactly where you are, right? And I think in the spirit of continuity, they probably drew that line the way they did because the five parcels that are all south of you, or however many there are there, it made sense to jog that line, if you will, to include up to yours in the centerpiece. Whether I agree with that or not is neither here nor there, but I think that was the intent. But I don't think that what is allowed in the historic district would preclude you from doing what you're doing.
It continues our current use.
Right, right. You have it, you grandfathered, if you will.
Right, but say we want to make a change, or we want to sell it, and somebody wants to change it, diminishes the value of the property.
Or does it?
I think it does.
And that's perfectly fine that you do. I think what we're trying to do is increase the values of properties, but that's all part of the discussion. That is the democracy we're in.
With any zoning change.
Straight across to be square.
And my second point would be by further, you know, saying that it's a historic district, there's really nothing historic about the properties around me.
You're right.
More of a wording.
We got to change that.
Yeah. We were originally calling it the Village Center. We had to scrap that because of the Hampton Beach Village District. So we had to get rid of the word village.
The woman who was just here needed the word historic in it to get funds to do things that she needs to do.
Right, so if you change it from historic, then it's not going to be.
It's not going to satisfy her need.
Right.
I don't think historic means what people are interpreting.
No, yeah.
That has implications.
If it doesn't mean anything, why is it there?
Because we have to designate something. We have to delineate the north and the south from the center.
Words matter.
And my third point was, if they're going to restrict the uses of our property, is the town in some way going to compensate the property owners for diminishing the value of their property? Or are they going to reduce the taxes on those properties?
TBD. I don't know. I don't know that answer, Tom. I think we're all trying to move forward in a direction that makes these things more valuable, which raises the question, is then my taxes go up?
Certainly could.
Nobody probably wants that either, right? So just leave it alone. Just don't touch it, right? Just leave it. Perfect. That's where I want to be, in a static gray world. Anyway, I think those are great points, Tom, I really do. I understand you're right there in the thick of it and the fact that you were in a very peculiar place right there. Great points.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this?
No.
You asked.
Well, it's a valid point, and that's just addressing his property, not, think of the rest of the properties.
Who are here?
Well, I don't know. The purpose of this, there's a mission statement here somewhere. The purpose of this district to encourage development and redevelopment of Hampton Town Center in keeping with its historic development pattern. Well, in the real center, opposite the gazebo, building's the same looks as they were 110 years ago.
Are you sure?
Absolutely. They were moved there when they built the overpass over the railroad, moved from Exeter Road or whatever it was called. I have a picture of 1926, 24, of a trolley, an open trolley coming from Laconia going to Hampton Beach, right in front of there. And every building you can see over the trolley looks the same. The Shaw block, Morelly's. Cult News or whatever, Kazaza.
That's why it's historic.
Right down to that little barber shop, which was a bank from Newburyport. They came once a week because there wasn't any banks in the teens. Now, the nail place was A&amp;P. I don't know when that was built, but it looks the same. Do nothing, and you're maintaining that historic look.
Morelly's had old pictures posted up all over the store when they were celebrating the 100th anniversary.
Going to put a town pump in the middle of Lafayette Square? That's what that's called there at the intersection of four roads.
Yep.
Now, that little jog you talked about, that kept 456 auto used car lot in the historic district in the middle, when it probably should have been jogged and kept it in the north, even though it's grandfathered, but it looked funny, that little jog. We have an ordinance, the zoning ordinance, Article 13, that you are amending here, but there's no mention in here of the amendment of Article 13, Section 7, which, when Massachusetts became a lemon state, automobiles, all the used car dealers moved to New Hampshire. And we put that in.
I don't know if that's true or false. Where's this going? All, all of them came here. Set up shop right there.
You finished?
I am.
Good. No dealer shall, no dealer shall be permitted from the south side of Rice Terrace, south to the north side of Park Avenue, on either side of Route 1 Lafayette Road. So you're going to permit auto dealers in the south and north section. That means from, let me read. Your verbal descriptions are only north-south and very, and very iffy. They don't go east-west description of the district, which is an objection. Town, center, south, which includes an area generally along Lafayette Road from New Hampshire Route 101 to just north of Winnicott Road intersection. I think somewhere else you mentioned where Dunkin' Donuts is, south. So Dunkin' Donuts, south, you're going to be able to have auto dealers, used car dealers. And that, that Shell station, Connell Lot, they get a variance for size. It would look great with colored pennants waving in the air, balloons, maybe overhead signs, special of the day. Now, there's no reference that this is being amended, this Article 13, 7, being amended, which is a flaw in this ordinance, because you're taking that right out. As far as incorporating Residence A in the business, this new business grouping, it's probably a first history of the town. It's usually the other way around. You go from business or general to Residence A, single-family only. You're going around that curve in Park Avenue off Fruit 1, and you're extending residence, the business around that curve into Residence A, so that the Janatus House and Barn are going to be in the business next to the toddler playground, the Tuck Field. And you're within 100 or so feet of Memorial Park, Founder's Memorial Park. Now, opposite that is still going to be Residence A, the small houses. That seems kind of weird, as well as the Residence A from Drake Side Road to the railroad overpass that used to be, which was rezoned by the planning board article from business to that, 300 yards north and south of Drake Side Road. Talking about historic, now what you're doing is taking a 240-year-old colonial mansion.
Right.
The General Moulton House, also known as the Haunted House, and you're making it non-conforming in this new self, something self, town center self. Because it's, why is it non-conforming? Because there's no business conducted on the lot. If they had a business on the lot, it would be conforming with your new zoning. How weird is that? And another thing I noticed in the little map that was in your 10-page packet, I ran out of yellow for this, is that the new zone, it's, the new dotted line, especially on the town center north, seemed to leave some no man's land between the, like, the business zone that exists now, but it's up to whatever is to the east. But your dotted line doesn't follow that. So there's a, there's a, there's a no, no, well, it's still, even though it's town center north, to the east of that is this no man's land that's white, which means that's still business that exists now. And then you get into Residence A, I think. I couldn't read the legend. Maybe that's why, there's two gradings that look the same. The one I could not read was the very first one. There's four boxes at the top, but I can't read it. Does anybody know? Does anybody know what that says?
Oh, so those four boxes on the top?
Four boxes. Are the, are the, are the existing zones that are shown in the different colors?
What's the first one? I deciphered the others.
Industrial.
Industrial? So you're changing some industrial to residential, permitted?
Industrial to residential?
The, nowhere else is residential allowed in industrial. So you're changing that to allow, that's along the railroad, right, industrial zone, I guess. That's what it's called, anyway. There's another thing that's prohibited, is a single family in the business. But in one of these zones, I guess this, the middle one, you're gonna allow one or two residences. In other words, you're gonna allow one, if that's all they want on the lot. And right now, that whole strip is prohibit single-family residences in the business zone, except when it's the residence of the owner or proprietor of the business on the lot.
We're trying to encourage mixed use, that, that's one of the major, one of the major objectives is to encourage mixed use in the downtown. That's why we're allowing single and two-family above business.
One or two, but the one, because what we found was that if you live alone or a single-family house in the business zone, you get more complaints from those people with the business activity, early deliveries and so forth, and the slamming doors of used car lots, opposite the apartment buildings. So, and after that fact, they did come in years later with that, single family's okay if you're running any business there. There was one new business built with apartment, but then a different owner didn't need a residence, so it just got rented out. No one was watching that. It is a very confusing article, and it's, I wish you didn't use it for the P O R, either. I wish you'd use the existing charts that we paid the Planning Commission to devise. They don't seem to get in the charts, the use charts, and the dimensional requirement charts. They're separate in the ordinance, and this one is written to be separate. You can't look at Article 3 or 4, especially 3, and get the requirement, what you need to find out. It should be combined. That's about it. I was disappointed that you kept the auto dealers in there. An auto dealer is defined in an ordinance as sellers of newer used cars, construction equipment, or trailers. So these are prohibited right now, in that section, that historic section.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, back to the board. I'll just speak my piece a little bit about the fact that this is not a perfect world. A lot of these issues that were just brought up are, are part of what we're trying to remedy. You know, what marches down Park Avenue a ways, professional office space, or whatever. The horse is already out of the barn. These are the problems that we're recognizing and addressing and trying to unify, so the zone is more fluid, more similar. Say what you want about it, but there are already problems there that we've observed, or someone has observed. I'm really not, I'm just a messenger on this. I didn't ask anybody to craft this. I'm not in love with every inch of it. I just recognize it for what it is. And to nitpick this, that, or the other, it's no different than what's out there now. It's no different than what's out there now. The only truth of it is, is that it will be better than what it is now. And that is pretty well assured, because there's some problems out there. So, those are all valid points, I can't disagree. But this would move in the direction of making these things
Put the other selectmen.
Better. So, that's my piece on that. Anyone from the board wishing, excuse me, anyone from the board wishing to elaborate on this?
Say that I concur.
And I'll just say that sometimes when you stir the pot, you make things worse than they were to begin with.
Sometimes when you don't do anything.
I have no problem, as a longtime resident of this community, with the way the Route 1 corridor is now.
So as a board, have we satisfied the language changes, Mark? The wording of the granting and the obtaining, and?
I think by changing the three words in H2, you're not, you're making editorial changes and not substantive changes.
Super.
However, yes, you still, the question still remains, do you wanna go forward with it?
Right, which is where I'm hoping to bring this, and for everyone's sake.
I think that the voter should have a chance to vote on it.
And vote on an article that they don't understand. They have no way of comprehending the impact that this is gonna have.
We don't know that. We don't know that.
How can you assume that every voter is uneducated?
I'm not saying every voter is uneducated. I'm saying even for an individual who is reasonably well-versed in planning techniques, is gonna be confused by this.
And then they would vote no.
This is a messy article.
Right.
And they would vote no.
Right, if they don't understand it, they have their freedom or fortune of voting against it. Keith?
Well, I think anything this length is always gonna be perceived as messy. There was a lot of participation in all of this from all of, my understanding, it's the majority of people that have businesses downtown have been canvassed, there's been communication. They pretty much know what's going on. I do agree with Tom, as far as the way that little two-lot sticks out, I get, I get his concern there. I think we'll have to deal with the parking. I, I'm gonna vote to put it on the ballot, and I'm gonna do that in that I think that it is complete enough to be enforced.
So, can I hear that in a motion, or from Brendan, can I hear it as a motion? Or from someone, can I hear it?
So all this time with all this struggling, you've still gotta mess with Tom Forton's lot.
Among others that we didn't hear from, I mean, Arthur just pointed out the haunted house, the spooky house.
Everybody knows where the businesses are. There are maps available. I'm assuming the committee studied the maps and where the businesses are located.
There were business people on the committee. There were people from.
Was Tom on the committee? Were you contacted? No. Well, I'm serious.
We're not gonna get into, we're not gonna get into a debate over one.
You're going to potentially be making serious problems.
You've made your points, Mary Louise, over and over. We understand.
I know, and you keep banging on this and insisting on putting an imperfect article before the ballot.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, it could be the first one we put on the ballot.
Ah, that's true. I agree with you.
In the spirit of moving along, everyone, you have it as a motion that you'd like to put on the ballot. I have a motion by Brendan.
I'll second it.
And I have a second by Keith. All in favor? Aye. I have Fran, and Mark, and are you still opposing?
I'm recusing myself.
You're recusing?
I'm totally opposed.
Totally opposed?
Absolutely.
It's a bold number one. First round of the conference?
Bold face that one.
Yes, because it's a mess.
Amend Article 1, General Section, General, Section 1.6, definitions, add definition of impervious surface.
Can we take 1036?
Is he still sitting here?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we, we did try to do him first. Are you just worried about the time? We just haven't, we are down to the last two.
I don't, we're almost done.
Right, we're almost done. Let's just blow it.
These should be relatively clean.
We tried to do 1036 at 10 past 7. Definitions of impervious surface.
Did you read it?
In the minutes, it doesn't, in the agenda, it doesn't get into anything more than that.
Yeah, that's it.
It's very short.
Do you wanna read the definition?
Read this one. Should make a motion. Do they want to make a motion?
For the ballot.
Teresa will make a motion, put it on the ballot, and will be seconded by Mary Louise. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Six, amend Articles 4, Dimensional Requirements, Section 4.8, to reduce the maximum permitted amount of impervious sealed surface, indicated as a percentage of, for all zoning districts, and set forth new standards for impervious surface coverage for redevelopment. New percentages and standards will be outlined in footnotes to the Dimensional Requirements table.
I'd like to comment on this one, because I've been troubled by this since our last meeting, in that, in that, a lot of properties could be non-conforming just as soon as we pass this. And I, I'm, I don't, I think the problem we're trying to solve, and our ability to solve it, is so miniscule compared to making people's properties non-conforming. I think it's out of balance.
Non-conforming?
Yes.
That's a problem, non-conforming?
No, I'm talking, this is about.
Well, I'm talking about.
We've already done that.
No, you have.
That one's done.
A non-conforming is a problem there.
I'll, that's all I'm saying. I didn't realize that when we were marching through this, because we were talking about impervious surface, and the fact that town has failed, and blah, blah, blah. And we're gonna try to right the boat with the last few properties.
It's a little too aggressive.
Absolutely. I mean, I understand, I understand it. But I don't think it's the right thing to do, to make people's properties non-conforming just because they're sitting there.
I think whenever you restrict something further, it's likely that there's gonna be existing conditions that, that's, they're subject to that, right? You're reducing something, so, so, do you wanna talk to that, Jay? Is there a grandfathered clause?
Absolutely is.
Okay.
Every single property in town is grandfathered.
They're grandfathered unless they wanna do the 50% improvement.
They're grand, right.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
That's the only way to catch up with itself.
But.
It can't.
Go ahead, Jay.
Even if they wanna do improvements on their property, they don't necessarily have to meet the new standard. They cannot exceed their existing amount of impervious coverage. They can maintain that, but they're not gonna be required to meet the new standard.
Okay.
That if you look at footnote A, I'm sorry. Look at 31 and the paragraph below that. That a lawfully existing prior to the adoption of this ordinance update, even with greater than 60% or 75% of impervious coverage, will be considered to be conforming with regard to impervious surface coverage. Article 4, 4.8, provided that there is no increase in the impervious surface coverage from the redevelopment, and either it is not a substantial improvement, as defined in our ordinances, or it is a substantial improvement, and they can demonstrate that they are managing their stormwater on-site. So there are ways that they can improve their property without necessarily having to meet the new standard. Without having to reduce the amount of impervious coverage that they've had, that they've got. We're trying to strike a balance, and we've worked, as you know, for a long time on this as well, to try to find a way to help to solve some of the flooding and water quality problems that we have in town, without making this a punitive ordinance. And we think this is a good balance that achieves that goal.
Anyone else from the board? Seeing none, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Peter?
Thank you, Peter Sari. Speaking about our property in particular, it's been mentioned by Arthur, the property of 459 Lafayette Road, Cult News Building. I read the minutes of the meeting back in January, and Jay commented about this article. And I took from that, from those minutes, that it's sort of like, if you like what you got, you can keep it. But I'm gonna use our property as an example of why this is difficult. And why it's so difficult for every single building on our side of Lafayette Road, these small lots with very little parking. And what parking they have is either paved, it's gravel, or we have, we have a lot of bin pack. You've now changed the ordinance to say, hey, look, if you got gravel, that's considered impervious. So in effect, our entire lot now is impervious. We have an old building, 140 or so years old.
Unchanged.
Well, we had that one addition put on the first one. Yeah, pretty much, pretty much unchanged. Very old building, so it's been depreciated over the years. It's down about $200,000 now. So what this article does is say, you can, you can improve this property, but up to $100,000. You can put another, if the building burns down, you can put another one up, but it can't cost more than $100,000 unless you meet this requirement. This requirement is, you have to infiltrate a store or somehow capture all, all of the stormwater runoff. Now, as you know, your site plan and subdivision regs say that you have to not exceed the peak runoff in effect now. So you're gonna have a situation where someone has an 80% coverage. He has to go out there somehow and capture every bit of rain that comes down, or treat it somehow, every single bit. Whereas the guy that meets the requirement only has to establish that he doesn't exceed peak runoff. And that seems awfully incongruous to me. But I may be misunderstanding it, but that's the way it reads.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? You get your moment just a minute, Jay.
Not a problem. Take it then.
Get comfortable.
First, there was no hearing on the first one, first definition?
Yes, there was.
Pardon?
Yes, there was.
We had a motion and a, and a second.
You already voted to put the first one on the ballot, right?
Right.
So there was no public hearing on that?
No, 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 no.
What are you asking?
The definition piece?
Because I was wondering how it got.
Okay, this is the second.
This is what, this is what you voted to put on the ballot in November 20th, twice the length of what you got here, so it did change. This is the posting, the whole posting for the 20, the two previous to the 20th of November. And you can see how long it is. And you made no amendments, you voted, put it on the ballot, both of them.
We have subsequent.
Has changed. Yeah. As, as, as it had been re-noticed. This, this, this one here is less than half the size.
And we, we voted to change that at the meeting.
This is less than half the size, what you've posted now.
This was, yeah.
December 18th?
Amended at December 18th.
So I don't know, well, 18th wasn't on the agenda, too. You already voted to put it on the ballot in November.
It's a previous public hearing, and it was amended.
The way I, this is a whole new thing about valuation. Instead of a percentage of, like you do for site plans, if you're, you're gonna add on 25%, you can waive the site plan, or whatever it is in the site plan regulations. So now you're going to valuation. And whose, whose figure do you take for how much the project's gonna cost?
It would be the owner.
It would have to be the owner. How many figures are they gonna be?
No one knows.
I said the owner.
The owner? You take his, whatever he said is gonna cost?
That's what we do now. That's what we do now.
You want every project now.
Well, billing inspector has something to say about how billing permits, how much this project's going to cost under his schematic things. It doesn't always agree with the developer. Okay, are you going to adjust the valuation? Are you, is the valuation going to be made by the assessor at that time? Or is he going to take what's listed in the assessment?
And what's listed in the assessment is the public record.
If you take what's in the assessment, are you going to adjust it to what the state says is the ratio each year?
What's in the counter for it?
Right now, it's 96%, it's 96 something.
I think it's actually 98 and a half.
98 and a half? It was 96 last year, yeah. Are you going to adjust that valuation?
No.
In the book, you're not? Okay. Just thought I'd ask. Everybody seems to not know it.
Gold stuff for you.
I just made it up.
That's not true. You didn't make it up.
Thank you. Thank you for your assistance. Jay, I think we're okay. Back to the board. As I said earlier, I think that whenever you're going to make something more restrictive, it's going to make it difficult. To Peter's point, I'm sure that probably the DPW is looking at this very favorably, that all that stormwater is being collected by the people who create it. Whatever lands on your piece, and that's the way it is, that's the regs now. If you, if it falls on your property, you need to contain it on your property via whatever, detention pond or whatever. That's your baby, whatever's within your property. So this could become problematic for some people, I get it. But right now, that problem is just being diverted. It's a problem that becomes a problem of the town at a cost that maybe we're trying to balance or control or minimize.
Problem with that, particularly in Peter's example of that building, is what we're saying in the last article is we want to keep the character of the downtown, and now we're going to impose something so we can't keep the character of the downtown. If that building burns down,
Yep.
You can't rebuild it.
Based on this
Yes.
Ordinance.
You rebuild it, but you can't change what was there.
No, it has to conform now. The setbacks
And if something's lost by fire, as far as my understanding, if it's lost by, destroyed by fire, act of God, you can rebuild in light kind.
That's in the ordinance.
Is there a clause in there, Jay, with regard to that?
There is not.
Okay.
Because if you have a non-conforming building and you have setbacks and don't have variances, you can rebuild the way it was.
Is that in the building code?
I'm thinking it's zoning, yeah.
It's zoning.
You get into Kevin's favorite section. Section in 1.2.
1.2.
Yeah. Which in the event of a damage
Said building may be rebuilt for its former non-conforming use.
Use.
Provided it started within a year of its damage and is completed within two years. The structure shall however conform to the dimensional requirements of the ordinance and the building ordinances and regulations.
Okay, I stand corrected.
With that circumstance, I mean, that's a catastrophic, whatever, I mean, all I'm pointing out is
And that's why we have a variance mechanism.
Maybe.
Well, I think that it's, we were just talking about in the beginning of the meeting, I'll remember that far back if I want to. We talked about a development that we allowed to go through that had sophisticated structures to handle onsite water and how we were going to have to develop some sort of bonding system to make sure if it's not successfully taken care of over what was determined by an engineer, a useful life of that structure, that we would be able to call that bond and have professionals come in and do it. Now, I warmly welcome the idea of trying to have less sealed surface. I think that the aggressiveness of going from 85% to 60% in a Residence A area such as like a Norton Road, up in Glen Hill, a lot of these hundred-by-hundred lots that are pretty well sealed if they have a pool and a home and a two-car garage and it's a ranch. And now we're going to have to have sophisticated onsite collection systems that are going to have preventative maintenance to them, or they're going to be needing to get variances. And I, and I see, I don't know, I personally think it's, and in the industrial land, I thought we wanted more industry, and now we're restricting that land on that in a general, which, you know, more industry, and we're restricting that down to 60%, but yet in business, it's 75. But what do we have in industry but business? I applaud the effort. I have trouble supporting this as it's written.
Anyone else? I think that a lot of data was brought forth from other communities, a broad number of communities. 85% is almost unheard of anywhere else.
Agreed.
And I don't think this necessarily discourages it. I mean, how much of Liberty Lane is, is probably one of the most valuable pieces of real estate in town? And the majority of it is not pervious.
Oh, we have Merrill Industrial Drive.
Perhaps, and it is
We have Fox Manufacturing. We have property on the other side of Route One or across the Taylor River.
And so it goes back to the goal of all this, too, which I'm not, I'm just debating this really a little devil's advocate.
Yeah, I agree.
And I know we have another applicant we need to hear, but we have some known problems. We have some flooding issues that are the result of 85% impervious cover. So why does it need to be impervious to be Pardon?
Like, surface side park is way difficult for anybody to do anything in that without getting very sophisticated process of building. Maybe that's what comes at the cost of progress, but it just, it's kind of a real burden to put on a screen board.
Those people might benefit from it the most, though. I mean,
Maybe.
Perhaps. I don't know.
I don't, I agree. I see both sides.
And I see your point tonight, but 85%, just statistically, the Conservation Commission came before us and pointed out that almost nowhere is 85% the norm. So these are more in keeping with what's
But we did have, we did have that PowerPoint representation that showed that a lot of Residence A was bumping the 60% currently. Your own slide showed that.
Sure, sure.
So that's, that's, that's the part that friends mean, that no one, I would have thought they might have thought of putting a little bit of a larger buffer, 65%, but I mean, if it's so, if it was close to 70% or whatever, that showed that they were very close to being, I know it was not a truly scientific or all-encompassing survey.
It was a sample survey. The reason we chose 60%, Keith, was because that's what's allowed in the Aquafor Protection Zone. And we thought it was a reasonable standard. It's still higher than what you're going to find in most of the communities. It's not going to be perfect for every property in town, no matter what we came up with. It's not going to be perfect for every property in town. It's impossible. But we thought it was a reasonable standard. There are some businesses that are projects that are coming and that you'll be seeing, that you have seen, that you, and that you will be seeing, that are coming in with chambered systems that will handle all their stormwater on-site. So there are ways to do that, and they're becoming more and more common. And those are more industrial sites, if you will. So there's more of a capability there to be able to maintain those systems. For a homeowner, it may be changing a permeable, an impermeable surface to a permeable surface for a patio or for a deck. It may be changing part of a driveway or a parking area to a permeable surface. It doesn't necessarily have to be a major change, doesn't necessarily have to be a very sophisticated, highly engineered system that they have to put in that will enable them to meet the standard. So I don't think we're, we're certainly not trying to make this too onerous on anybody who wants to make an improvement on their property.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
I'd love to move it to the ballot.
I have a motion by Mark Loopley. And it's seconded by Brendan. All in favor?
Aye.
Stained?
Mr. Chairman, just, I think the article, Amendment Five, the definition of impervious surface, I think that may have been shortened since the last public hearing.
Isn't it December 18th minute? Just judging how they shortened it.
Shortened wording.
Right.
And so I don't, so since it was changed at the December 18 meeting
And re-notified.
And this is, it needs to be heard again tonight.
So we couldn't just motion and move it through? You want to hear it read, the definition?
I think you need to open it for public comment.
We did.
I'm sorry, I missed it. You went so fast.
The one on
Something we can
Thank you.
We didn't open it, but yeah, we did get public comment.
If that's the
To cover you.
I appreciate it. So we'll reopen the definition of the impervious, I'll find my agenda.
Okay, amend Article One, General Definition, 1.6 definition, to add a definition of impervious surface, is that what you want to reopen?
Yep.
There you go.
Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none? Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss, that would talk to the topic of the ordinance about the definition?
The same, same thing happened on that first article. Wasn't on the legal notice on 18 December, either of those. The martial arts, where you also assume ownership of it. And I don't know what you, how you changed it. But this is the same thing happened here. It wasn't on the legal notice, there was only three things on 18 December. And it's a bad, I think it's bad that you do things on zoning amendments. Not on the legal notice.
It was on November 20th, the first public hearing.
Right, right, right.
They were changed
On the 18th, but it wasn't on the 18th legal notice. You'd already voted to put those two things on the ballot on the 20th of November.
And the board voted to reopen it at the 18th meeting and repost for this meeting.
Okay, but it wasn't a legal notice and it concerned zoning amendments. So that's all I looked at.
Well, the legal notice is for tonight. It was done for tonight's hearing, the legal notice, because it was substantially altered by the board after that first public hearing.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none? Back to the board.
Shall we revote on it to see if we continue to support it?
Let's vote yes.
I'll move it to the ballot. Tracy makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Fran. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate your work with this.